Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of short comments here before starting our regular agenda. I would really encourage everyone who hasn't taken that step to get their vaccinations to get them. My understanding is we're about 1% off of the threshold for the June 20th release, and we're somewhere around 4% off of the July 11th total removal conditions. So I think it's imperative that we get this taken care of for our business community and just for our young people, for sports and everything else. It would be really great if everyone that hasn't taken the time to do it, to step up. And sure that there are many appointments easily available either through your local pharmacy or through S H A or at the Alx Hall. Last I heard, they were moving very, through there very quickly. That's the sermon for tonight. So move on to Agenda Item 1.1. The council of Towne Kinersley, having established forum, resolves to call the June 14th, 2020 regular meeting of council to order at 5:01 PM. Need a mover in this, please. Dean, Rob, Paul and Peter. Anyone see anything on the consent agenda for addition to the regular agenda? I don't think there was a whole bunch there. Was there? Just some reports. Agenda item 2.2, then. The council of Towne Kinersley resolves to adopt the agenda for the June 14th, 2021 regular meeting of council as presented. That a copy of this agenda be attached to and form part of the minutes of this meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilor Becker, all in favor. Anyone see anything on the agenda they wish to declare a conflict of interest on? Don't think there was anything there on the agenda I noticed this afternoon. Move on to Agenda Item 4.1. That the council of Towne Kinersley resolves, whereas the time being 5:02 PM, that the regular meeting of council be adjourned to a confidential and camera meeting. Mover, second, please. Forum, second, all in favor. Move on to Agenda Item 5.1. That the council of Towne Kinersley resolves, whereas the time being 7:04 PM, that the confidential and camera meetings concluded and the regular meeting of council is resumed. Can I have a mover, second, please? Chris, second, Randy, all in favor. Move on to Agenda Item 5.2. That the council of Towne Kinersley resolves to amend the agenda of the regular meeting of council until June 14th, 2021, item 8.6. Marathon after these types of agreement agreement. Need a mover under second here for this, please. Agenda Item 6.1. That the council of Towne Kinersley resolves to approve as presented the minutes from the May 25th, 2021 regular meeting of council and the minutes from the June 2nd, 2021 special meeting of council. That these minutes be attached to and form part of the minutes of this meeting. Need a mover, second, Forum. Rob, all in favor. Do you recognize the welcome Vicki Nwiler and the floor of yours now?
Thank you.
Carry ahead.
He said, I see they're standing. It doesn't matter.
Whichever works for you, and if you really want to lose your mask.
No.
You can.
Okay, I'll lose it because it's hot.
It's tough to talk with masks on.
Yeah, thank you very much for this opportunity, Mayor Perkins and the council and the administration. I guess you see now why the major reason I'm here this evening, not only for the 114 Main Street, but all of Main Street, all of the commercial properties in our community. I feel strongly that the business community is going to be severely impacted by this increase in commercial tax rates. And of course, you can see that mine is very unfavorable in terms of my property. I'm at a total rate, a total tax, that's with school as well, but you can do the math of yourself. I'm at a 57.7% disadvantage in my property this year from a tax perspective. It's very serious. I take it very serious. I've done a lot of research. I've talked to many people about my concerns from the assessment stage. I've talked to administration here a couple of times. I've talked to SAMA a couple of times. I've talked to the M L A. I've talked to the mayor. I've talked to CETA. I've talked to several communities. I've talked to the real estate people. This is a very serious implication in terms of any kind of business growth or sustainability of business. We're coming out of a COVID year, as we all know, or two years, basically, almost. We're getting to two years, and it's been a very serious implication on our business community. For me, $6,370 is a lot of money. I can't go downstairs to my tenant and say, gee, by the way, I'd like $525 more just to do business in Kindersley. It's not going to happen. My tenant is going to say, adios. I can't do business in Kindersley out of here. So there's a very big, deep ripple effect here. So that's what I'm coming to council for consideration. Now, I can be mad and I can be angry, and I'm certainly going to be honest that I had those moments. And then I thought, that's not going to get us anywhere, none of us. We consider and debate. You have major challenges as a community collective officials, and I recognize that, and I honor how difficult the decisions that you make are. I don't take that lightly. But I do have business decisions that I made based on information that was available at the time. And everything has changed from the way the assessment system works, which I know that you guys don't control, but it impacts you. And I'm here to say that I think you do need to pay more attention to the assessment process because it's in fact affecting you. According to my conversation with the mayor, you have a $55 million shortfall from other years in your assessment. That's extreme. It's a large number. And so we all have to work together to find out a way to get through this. And to anticipate, because I'm going to tell you now on my conversation with Suma, it won't change next time either with our hotels being income-based. They've had two years of COVID for the next time when the assessment comes through. So we have some serious, serious challenges. I don't like income-based systems of assessment. And I think Mr. Perkins and I can agree that the hotels have hit hard at every level. But they also are now the ones that are paying a lot less tax because of those implications. But I can't pick it up. I can't pick it up on Main Street. If you go up Main Street, and I'm sure some of you around the table are properties on Main Street, I know you do, you already know the implication with the levy that was provided to you. It's serious. Now, some of us can get through that, but some of our business community can't. I work with business in this field, and it's a serious problem. So we just did 55 business loans for which we all have to appreciate. That's Little Community Futures Meridian. How about the CBA loans that these people have at banks and other institutions that are going to come due? And that's an impact. So we have some serious problems that we need to work on together. I understand your challenges. I'm not denying that you have to have a tax base to work with. I understand that. How do we work together? So what I'd like to propose this evening is just to have that conversation. This is my goal, and I hope this makes sense for you that this is how I'm doing this, but I hope it's proactive. My goal is to assist in ensuring fair and reasonable taxation for commercial properties by providing positive impact, input, pardon me, into fiscal concepts and business attraction and retention to ensure the stability and future growth of business as well as preserving and growing business investment with the goal of increasing the assessment and tax base to support clearly defined commitments of a town. That's what my goal is. I'm only here for that reason. And yes, there's a selfish component to it. I own properties and I own a business. So I'm very serious about trying to be a positive influence in that regard. So there's three things I thought, and this is my thoughts. I wanted to outline our current state of affairs. I wanted to talk to you about your opinions and your strategies that you have that I might not know and might not understand. I'd like to hear that. And I'd like to outline a forward plan of how that we can move forward together as a business community to work through these plans and try to eliminate the problems, whether it's communication, whatever it is. Let's talk about it. Let's have that open-ended conversation from a business perspective. I want to talk about this. How about a new Kindersley slogan that says, "The town with the lowest commercial and residential property tax rates in Western Canada." How about we work towards that strategy not to be near the high end because it's hurting us economically? People are, you did wonderful work with the Chamber of Commerce and this investment attraction document. It's wonderful, but it doesn't mean anything if you don't have a tax rate that's fair and reasonable. And I'm not suggesting it's all the Towne Kinersley. I'm suggesting that it's assessments. There's a whole lot of things. But I think you guys have the power to influence those decisions as well. We can't just throw our arms up and say it's SAMA. SAMA did it. No, you guys can affect SAMA. You can talk to them. You can tell them. They're very open to talk to me at the company. They're very open about it. So I just feel really strongly that a team and a relationship and a partnership could be developed to help everybody, and I genuinely mean that. I like to talk about what's our tax advantages, not our disadvantages. I want to be able to sell my property someday, and I don't want to have to say to them, oh, and by the way, you need $1,433 a month to start before you start to pay a mortgage, before you start to get tenants. You need $1,433 before you turn a key to buy my property. That's the tax bill. So that's, that's what we talked about, you guys. I'm not the only one that's feeling this pinch. I don't have the luxury of selling. I have a tenant that pays under a contract for which I can't go back to them, for which they would just say, adios, bye, I'm not getting up. So it's a serious issue, and I'm not just concerned about Vicki and my group. And I expressed that to the mayor. I've expressed it to Audrey that I'm concerned about our whole community. And I think it's time we start to have that conversation. And I'm welcome and I'm open to it. I really am. I think we got to get past that. So what I'd like to do is tell you, I know that SAMA reassessed in 2021. I know assessments are not in your control, but they're part in your control. So I know that happened. The government of Saskatchewan set the percentage of value at 80% for assessment for residential and 85% for commercial. And let me tell you what that could mean, another 15% next year. Because that's the government of Saskatchewan saying, we understand the commercial impact. We understand that it's been tied to COVID, but that doesn't mean next year. They're not going to change that, and I would get to pay 15% more on my assessment. So we have not just today's issue. We have tomorrow's issue, which is 15% that is up to somebody else, not you guys in chamber, but it's up to the Saskatchewan government. So what can you do to lobby them? What can you do to say, hey, you got to leave that alone, Terrell. We got to get back on our feet. We got to find new ways to do business and get business here. So that's what I'm telling you. This is not a one-off. This is a long-term fix that needs to be considered, and that's why I wanted to just point out that state of affairs. School tax rates have also gone up, as you know. Not your problem, but it is your problem because that impacts all of us again. So we can't, it's not one without the other. How do we have some school boards to say, hey, there is no more? How do we affect that change? Business has to be able to do business because the ripple effect is we don't have workers. We don't have employees. We don't need them if we're not in business. So that's our reality. It's the ripple effect that I'm talking about, and that implication is very, very deep. The Towne Kinersley increased the base rate to 10.6% or 10.6 times. The Towne Kinersley also increased the building factor for commercial to 1.32, and they increased residential slightly to 0.7876, I believe. Towne Kinersley increased revenue, their tax revenue to offset their expenditures for this year and their capital cost. And although that it was a nice thing you put on the tax levy, you were quoting from 2019. We're now in 2021. So $525,000 more was collected, will be collected in tax this year for 2021. Correct, Audrey? What you quoted on your sheet was 2019. You're at 2019 rates today, but not from last year. You increased $525,000 more.
Right, because they lowered it last year.
Yeah, because we put that 10%.
The 10% is one thing that Rod and I did, Mr. Mayor Perkins and I talked about. I disagree totally with that 10% last year because now it hurts us even more, right? We jump again. So I like to compare year over year. So 2019, 2020, 2019. So we did increase the taxes. Now, recognizing you guys that you don't have the same assessment for 2021. So again, who's paying the bill for the $525,000? Those of us who are left with higher assessments, right? So although I know that you're trying to hold the line, it isn't holding the line. And I'm not, I'm just stating the facts. It's nothing unfactual that I'm talking about, correct, Audrey? Correct me if I'm wrong. So we don't have the same assessment to pay the tax base to get you the $525,000, and that's your reality.
It shifted.
It shifted, and it shifted a lot to me at 57.7%. So that's where you can see my concerns and the concern I have for others down the street. Because what happened is we are now just commercial. We are not Main Street. We are not Highway Commercial. We're all together. And I do not, and you all know it, Main Street does not ever have the same potential for opportunity for growing my land values, et cetera. Main Street doesn't even compare. And Mayor Perkins and I spoke about that. I can give you factually statistical data to support what I'm saying. People don't buy properties on the highway for the building. They buy it for the land. And downtown Kindersley land doesn't compete to get better. So that's our realities. That's the facts. I'm not stating anything unfairly interrupting, and you know those facts. So what I honestly would like to know from council is what your plans are for Kindersley, especially specifically in relationship to the business retention and expansion policies.
Well, we've been working, trying. We have a developer that is putting some residential land. Main Street, Equine Ferentz has been, when we started five years ago, we put a list of priorities on, and I think there was eight on it. I don't have it here anymore. It used to be sitting right here, but we replaced it. We clicked off seven of the eight, and the last one, and what most of us considered the most important, was developing a Main Street downtown. And, you know, we did get one or two new buildings in there and one or two new businesses, but it's not what we really want. And I'm certainly in agreement, you and I discussed the empty lots that are sitting there. And I think in coming down us, we may have to come up with something that treats them differently because there has to be some, there's a stick or a carrot to get something built on those lots because when you take an extra, I'm sure there's eight or 10 of them there, you throw a building up on those 10 lots, it's going to change the total assessment by a significant sum of money, which is the battle we face. And we're trying to come up with. You know, you and I did discuss very thoroughly, I think, the fact that we have trimmed a ton of money out of this organization in the last four and a half years. And we've also done a ton of capital projects, some of which were, I guess, twice they had to be done. We spent in excess of $8 million on our lagoon project. And we were probably, we were on a lifeline, basically, with Saswater because...
But the implications of a lagoon development and an improvement, if we don't have businesses here, we don't, it doesn't matter. If people can afford to be here, the ripple effect will matter. And I'm not suggesting you don't need to do a capital project. That's not what I'm here to judge about, Rod. I'm not here to judge. I'm here to say we have to do it different. And I know I have to do things different based on the decisions that have been made. I have to look at doing business differently for myself. And it isn't an open credit card that I get to use to support my property. And I guess that's what I'd like to council to work towards is if we do not have a strategy that's formal, then what? What happens next? Like, we can talk till cows come home, but what's our strategy? How many businesses do we want to get there this year? Do we want to be the lowest taxed business, commercial businesses in Saskatchewan and Western Canada? Do we? What's our strategy?
I think one thing right off the bat when we were talking, oh, sorry, Gary. Okay, sorry. I do feel your pain, Vicki. I don't know if you saw this, like, maybe you heard of Saspros coalition? No, I saw your guys on it, but it's a problem throughout Saskatchewan, like, not just you. Within the oil patch, we continue to lobby the government. Like, I know I fight the R M board, the same thing, and I don't like the bigger stick to come down, but we're always lobbying the federal government because the municipalities set the mill, and there's a big difference between, you know, like, in some of the R Ms I have in, five to six times more than I, like, I own land in some, and an oil well's assessed at $90,000, and a farmland's assessed at 90,000, and the farmland pays 400,000, and the oil well pays 2,000. So like, there's, it's because there's no guys that own oil wells on those boards. So that gets way more skewed than you are here. I think here, like, honestly, did you appeal your tax?
No, because I did go through the process, Gary, to consult with Audrey a couple of times. I talked to SAMA, and honestly, I have the facts that SAMA bases their decisions on, and they're facts.
So your property, your property is, that's what it was assessed at? Like, all we look at is a full budget, and we didn't know, like, we've been talking to some people, and their properties have went down.
But that was a curiosity that I asked the mayor about. Like, what's the sample of the systems and the properties that are presented? Because that's the issue. I mean, no disrespect to Audrey, but I was very open about my property with her. So I'm one of the worst in this town for this rate of 57.7.
Yours definitely seems high, I'm not arguing with that.
So I don't think $17,236 per 30 feet of frontage is fair. And honestly, it's a nice property, but it isn't that nice.
Well, I'm not arguing with you, and I mean, maybe dog miss, but it's like you said.
But it's not just that property, Gary. I can give you the list if you would like it. I've done my homework. There's a laundry list of all properties on Main Street.
So are they all?
Then they're terribly reassessed because they were valued in a different format. Main Street was valued different, at 0.76% of the assessment value. Highway traffic was at, or Highway Commercial was at 114, I believe it was.
So they're way higher.
No, they were way higher. Now, in the new assessment, we're one. We're grouped together. So honestly, that's part of the problem. You have an unfair tax system.
I'm going to address that. So what they did, they didn't originally group you together. They originally did downtown and highway residential, or highway industrial, highway and industrial area. When they did that, based on the sales that were, so there was 30 sales that they used to do the market factor. The sales, the nine sales that were on the Main Street area put your factor at 1.19. SAMA said, holy crap, that's a huge increase, which it was from the 0.76. So then they opted, hey, let's look at retail versus warehouse, and then they rearranged those 30 sales and did it that way, and it got you lower to 1.11. So it could have been worse.
Well, not much worse.
But not what's worse, but that was just based on what the property on Main Street was.
But okay, so let's talk about that if we want to get into the detail stuff because there was a property sold for $1 million on Main Street. But they don't pay any tax. They're exempt. So their assessment goes against me. So honestly, how is that fair and reasonable? They don't pay any tax, but the $1 million sale goes against that market value and inflates the pricing.
Whose fault is that?
Whose fault is that?
Yeah, was that SAMA's?
That's SAMA's fault. That's the system that's being used. And my understanding is, administration, and I could be wrong about this, Audrey, that the median price was decided to be used. So what, if six properties sold, it's the median price of the properties on that section. So I don't want to get into all the details of, I'm not an SAMA assessment expert. That's one issue with this. But I think that what councils don't understand, in my opinion, is that you do impact that. You can make this happen with municipal affairs and the Saskatchewan government and the M L A and say that this is unfair. Main Street will never compete with Highway Commercial. There's not, there's not an open help that I'm going to ever compete with them. And I knew it going into it. But I also knew that at the time of the build, my business decision was 0.76, right? 0.76. I thought to CETA for this project of mine. I shared it with the province on how to build a project, how to do lot line to lot line builds, how to make this happen so that their Main Streets and ours can grow and develop. And honestly, we wouldn't have the building across the street from me if mine wasn't built. So we are gaining momentum because of those things. But this is not a fair tax, in my opinion. A property that owns a block of land on this near us here pays maybe $600 more than now you do. A block that's a lot more services that you provide to them than me, 30 feet in the front. My tenant doesn't get garbage collection, like, no other ones do, but nothing. There's not, I get a street in front of me clean. I'm not being disrespectful. I put my own sidewalk in. You didn't put that in. I did, right? So what I'm saying is how do we work through this? Whether it's SAMA, yes, Gary, I recognize that, but I'm just referring to what controls are here. I get it. I get agriculture. I get the oil industry. I honestly understand it. But how do we influence that?
I think, I think it's, to make any kind of a dent with SAMA by ourselves is not going to do it. It's like the C F I B. I've been a member of the C F I B for 40 years. They're the voice of the little guy. And when you hand them a petition of 600 signatures about something, they have to listen. Because if I picked up the phone and phoned Autobahn, they would give me, thanks for coming out. That'd be the end of the discussion right there. So my question is, Vicki, how do you suggest Kindersley and towns like us, we're not that far off the radar. I compare. Every time I go somewhere, I compare. I drove around Rose Town. You look at our swimming pool, our fire hall, our industrial area, everything that we started on our checklist when we got into council five years ago. We did the same thing when we were re-elected. We're doing things that we hope improve the town. They do cost money. We understand that. But we, we made the decisions to do these things based on people's opinions and complaining about we don't have this, we don't have that. How many years did we listen to the previous regime that was spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants about a swimming pool? They couldn't, they couldn't build a goddamn hot tub, and we built it as a community, and it's going to affect the taxes. I understand that. I don't like my taxes either. They went up a similar percentage on me, but my building is over a half a century old. So I didn't get that big hit. I'd be pissed off too. But what can we do as a single community?
Well, you know why, frankly, I can get into the logistics of what I would do this night tonight, but I don't think that's the angle to go here. I think the committee or a group has to get together and decide those things. I can tell you right now what I do. I wouldn't waste my energy on not writing, or I wouldn't, I mean, not that words. I I don't think it's ever a waste of time to say, we're here, but one of the things that that interests me is if we don't have a plan, how do we share that with the government to say we have a strong plan on what we want to do for Main Street? We have a strong plan on what we want to do for the commercial industrial area. We have a strong plan for whatever it is. This is how we're gonna grow our assessment. Now, how are you gonna get behind us? How are you gonna get behind us? What incentives are you gonna provide? Because what my worry is, Randy, wait till next year. Because the government of Saskatchewan is gonna need more money and so is the federal government. So now we get to pay what more income tax? More, oh, this fifteen percent is still on the line, don't forget, right? I I don't know. I I I have some ideas and thoughts. I've shared them with the mayor. I don't think we have time tonight to go through that list. But I am really eager to be part of that whole caption. I think it's time.
And coordinate the community-driven group?
I would like to see council behind it, and I'll tell you why. You guys need to be on the ground with this with us. It's not them and us. You guys are going to be impacted by these decisions. And without you guys there, we're just another group of people meeting. Now, I respect the chamber and all of the hard work and good things they're doing. And they'll get on side. I've already talked to them. But we need you guys to hear what our concerns are.
Who, who are you? Like, I mean, when you say, you need, you need?
I'm as a business owner.
Oh, okay.
Like, I I've talked to lots of people already, Randy.
Right.
Which I don't want to name who, I've, the list goes on. But this is not Vicky Newmeyer's concern. This is the concern of our commercial and business people. How many taxes do you think we can afford? They have bills to pay. On December, December thirty first, twenty twenty-two, they all are paying written checks for forty thousand dollars to somebody for CBA money, regional relief and recovery money, C W B, whatever the heck it is. They've got bills to pay. So they're servicing debt too. So Chris had a question, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't have a question. I just was gonna say that Vicky and I did discuss directly this trying to set up some kind of a group that would have that influence and have the ideas. Now, I'm, and I as you say, I said absolutely, I would sit on something like that and ensure I can find a councilor or two that would be more than happy to. I'm, I'm not a person, I'm not great at just throwing out ideas. I'm probably better at making things happen than I am idea. I never, ever profess to be much of an idea person, so I love to have some people that have got ideas because it, uh, there are, there are a lot of ideas out there that come to fruition and work really well. And I certainly would fully support any initiative. I, I would love to get all the lots on Main Street sold. I would love to lower the taxes and and we will lower them if we have something to work with. And again, we I suppose what, you know, and I think you have to appreciate, there's what, about a thousand houses in town and I'm guessing three or four hundred businesses. We simply do not look at each individual tax bill. In fact, I have to be real honest, I don't look at mine very closely as far as the assessments go. I did track it through and I think it was four years ago, my assessment went up a hundred thousand dollars, which was twenty-five percent. Just because, and then I stopped and think, no, I can figure out, like, it, the house next door that we sold, the one down the block sold, the one around the corner sold. And so that particular area had, and this was back in, you know, twenty fifteen, fifteen, and prices were sky high. So, yeah, but I would be more than happy to entertain a situation where we can work with you to try, I mean, we, our goal is to try to build our business space.
So is there a strategy that's formalized that can be shared with me in terms of where you're at or what your thinking is?
I don't know that you'd call it a strategy. It's more of a wish list.
Yeah, I think we spent the better part of a council meeting discussing earlier this year. It's nothing that we can really talk about yet, but um, we've been working specifically on Main Street when we were setting our goals for the next session of council for the next four years. Uh, Main Street was the main topic. Uh, the better part of that meeting was spent on that. We haven't finalized anything, but there are a few ideas and works that are coming out of the pipeline this year yet.
Which we would be more than willing to share.
Yeah, I think that's a great starting point for us knowing, right?
Well, like, new build, we have three years, like, you got three years tax. The line was held. And then I think for Main Street, we even
Went up to five for a while and I got back to three, I think.
Twice.
But I'd be quite honest, that didn't, didn't do much.
Doesn't touch it.
I'm not sure that any tax incentive really is gonna get a building built.
No, there's existing buildings too that need attention as well. Or stuff like that that we
And we've talked about that, you know, so that, I mean.
I think there's a lot of bright minds and a lot of intelligence in our community, a lot of history, a lot of experience, and I just think it's time to rein it all in and to try to work together to try to find solutions. Because I think it's gotta, we've gotta get on the same page. And honestly, I don't want to invest in Kindersley right now anymore.
Seventy's too high. We, we, I don't think there's that person at this table.
Actually, I was gonna say, when I read it, it was, well, how in Main Street, when we're sitting there struggling to do anything and then your taxes go up?
Yeah, we're, we're not saying, because I was like, I still don't understand how they compute that, but whatever.
So the reality is, is that it's not just Vicky, Newmeyer and Craig Newmeyer's building. It's Main Street. The whole thing is suffering, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And 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 you know it and I know it, so proactively, and I guess like, I I don't know what the options are from a short-term basis. Like, do I seek the hardship? Abatement from you? I'm asking you a question. I think fifty seven, one seven percent in anybody's mind is a bit ridiculous and a bit of a hardship. Because I'm not, I don't know where to go. Like, I I don't have the same opportunity to go and bring another widget in and sell it out to back alley, I guess.
I don't think you can get an abatement, but we'll look at probably some for the whole area.
Yeah. So I'd like to see if you do something that it happens for all of Main Street. I'm not here for me. I'm just using me as the example because it's impacted.
Three people in this room have built things on Main Street.
And we can pass things along so far, you guys, like, I know some of you probably write your properties up. But at some point, your tenant's gonna go, holy man, I had a really bad year last year. Covid had a lot of businesses. And I look at a couple of them that are brand new here and I go, oh, my gosh. They're, they're, they're on the tip straight now. Does this put them over the edge? Three thousand dollars more taxes? I don't know. That, it's scary to me. So I I genuinely come here for that. I I'm concerned and I want to help because the other way doesn't help. Like, I don't want to fight, I don't want to do all that. I just needed to understand, so I appreciate Audrey and Jenna's help from helping me get the numbers and to try to understand this. And I think you would all agree that assessment is not an easy formula to get and understand. Like, even I could call my insurance agency and say, would you tell me how the act replacement insurance works? And then I ask Taylor the same thing. Tell me how replacement works and your thinking around assessment. So I had to learn all that stuff, but anyone can do it and we need to get together to figure out how to change this. So I asked a question from forward planning. To to get back to me, I know the mayor is interested and I'd be happy to work with whoever. I'll gather a few people up. The Chamber of Commerce is more than willing. Because without it, you guys, I'm, the investment attraction piece goes nowhere.
And one thing I do do, Vicky, is once a month, in fact, it was this morning, I met with Rick Miller at the standing meeting, and there's nothing to say. We couldn't expand that to two, three or four more people.
Yeah, I'd really like to see us look outside of normal as well and try to look for experts in the fields of property management and how to see, how, what are the tricks and tools of it? Because like I said to the mayor, if the, some of the property owners and people hired professionals to change their assessments, give me their names. Because I'm gonna, I'm going for it next time. If that's what it takes is, I'd be better to spend my money trying to change my assessment than to to sit here and say, oh, well, oh, well, you know? So I I really, really truly, because this is long term. Like I said, Audrey, like, in ten years, with no changes happening, I get to pay the town in Kindersley sixty-three thousand dollars more and I get nothing different. You know? So that's just the extra. What the other part?
But what happens is some buildings sell around you, like, in two years when they're reassessed, you could go down again. Like, it's sort of where it's not, like, you're not sounding like that.
But four years is too long? At twenty-four thousand dollars more, Gary, sorry. It's too, it's too much? It's not reasonable if you're down in Kindersley.
When you start handpicking, like, and I think yours are too. I'm not arguing that, but it, it's where those assessments go that.
There's other strategies you could use within your boundaries of tooling where, and no one likes to say residential should pay a little more. Nobody likes that. I don't either. Because I think they need too much.
But commercials always been where we, the commercials always been higher than that.
But commercial is the leaders of your community that drive the economy. So if you don't have the business community healthy, you don't have healthy.
That's what we, because we did drop the commercial rate. When we first came in, it was, was it one point three three?
It, it's one point.
Gary and we.
We lowered it a bit there, didn't we?
Yes, right, yes.
We lowered it, for sure we did.
That was on the same page as you, while, while we were talking about that. So we did lower it a bit hoping to that hasn't quite happened. That was, that was when we first got in, we were trying to.
And I, and I truly do not give any disrespect. I wasn't looking for you to have all the answers this evening. I think it just has to be time to have that conversation outside of chambers. Brainstorm, bring in new ideas, get creative, think about innovation. And honestly, if we have to think about budget and what we can afford and what we can't afford, then that's a conversation we have to have too. If there's things that have to wait, like, I have to wait now on my projects. So if if we can strategize about what that best option is, then we have to strategize about it because that's how it works.
So, Vicky, do you, do you suggest coming up with some ideas, new different ideas for exclusive to Kindersley or sharing them with Sama? So other communities that have a Vicky Newmeyer on their Main Street that is paying high uh, gets a break too? Are you thinking more locally?
Well, you know, because you guys, this isn't about a break, and I just want to be clear. If I can come to council and I know that there's a clear strategy on how are you gonna keep my, if you're using this pool of money that you're collecting to keep business here, retaining it, expanding it and growth, then I can think different sometimes about that, right? I can think, oh, well, if I know you're gonna fill up Main Street and assessments in four years are gonna go down, okay, I'll suck it up. I'll suck up twenty-four thousand dollars or sixteen or whatever, no, twenty-four. I'll suck that up for four years. But right now, I'm disappointed because there is no strategy. And it's, it's the driver of going hard, it's gonna teach your plan that you did.
And and Main Street, and I'm on Main Street, so I, I feel your pain. We, we do receive little perks like flowers and new garbage cans and things that the other communities and other business communities don't receive. They're not huge, but they
And I respect and appreciate a lot, Randy. It's not that. I'm not here to nitpick about what I I'm happy with a lot of things, but I'm not happy that we do not have strategies and we do not have what I see as innovative opportunities to do it different. And yeah, if it works for us, maybe it could work for Sama and Suma and whoever, right? And I already know that Sama and Suma are here in all this a lot, not Vicky Newmeyer, but the story is the same across the province. So you, you have advocates sitting next door to you. So how about you guys leverage that, right? You're stronger than you think as a, as a council and as a community. And your voice is important at the tables. So I just think you can't, don't, don't dismiss yourself as how important your opinion and the letter is to municipal affairs and to all of the people that matter. You're M L A. All of us folks need to know how you're feeling about this. And no, Gary, it isn't just my property. And no, you can't just take that. But what I'm here to tell you, this is not just me. I'm just the first one here. It's all on Main Street and commercial properties are all like this. There's many that are. So that's, I just want to make that clear. This, mine is unfair, but there's a lot of other ones that are too.
Well, I, I, like, I hear you, but like, I've been fighting, not fighting on the federal versus municipality, like, there's a whole group of us for probably seven years with the South government and it's, I don't know, it
And I, and I hear you're paying too?
It is. I, and I know the only thing I did is take, you know, equipment when they reass, they reassessed us harder this year. They included pipelines, which they never did, so, but then the RM just sort of plays with the mill rates. So it's sort of like the mill rate doesn't, right? You need ten million to run your thing so they make the numbers work and
And I feel a bit the same about the town.
I, I, that's exactly what we did. We did, like, and that's, I mean, that's exactly what happened. It's like, wait, like, that's exactly it. We've only got three rates to set, right? You know, and I'll send you a letter because honestly, what you're talking about, the group that we lobbied just got sent to the government and I got your email. It's exactly like you said.
And I understand that, Gary, that I really have some worries. And I do think that if the right approach is not, people need to start setting up a pay attention.
Well, the higher powers are getting, they're getting, like, Sam is getting it all the time. Like, oh, I talked to, you know, I, on my properties, I got five hundred and eighty that I gotta go through individually. And then, and yeah, and but it's a problem, it's a problem that they know there.
But I made an investment on the town of Kindersley's property on Main Street based on good business decisions for me. And all of the rates were pretty fair at that time. Not fair, but reasonable, okay? And all of a sudden overnight, like I said to Audrey and Jenna, I woke up and I went from eleven thousand dollars in taxes to seventeen two. And I went, oh, my goodness. Well, actually, that's not what I said, did I? And I hope you understand. I was very, just, I, my breath was taken away because I have thirty feet of frontage and I committed to this community. I've shared my story. I'm not, I I'm a Kindersley fan. I've been here sixty-two damn years. I know I believe in this town. I work in economic development. There's a lot of smart people out there that can help us.
Well, I I know what the problem is, problems why, and it's, they're saying that it's, it's and I don't even, egg's not paying its fair share is what it comes down to. When you look at their times, point seven five or whatever and everybody, and that makes a big difference on if your land's a quarter worth half a million and you're only paying five hundred bucks, like, but that's here nor there.
Yeah. But I was told by one person, I won't mention names, that I shouldn't worry at all because that little assessment increase for you, you should see what the farmer's up. Well, honestly, I can, I'm empathetic to the farmers. I I don't, I understand, but I can only be impacting on my situation right now because I don't know farming and I don't disrespect farming. I have no opinion. I just, I'm here to tell you that I think that from the business community's perspective, we need to start to proactively address some of the concerns and issues. And you know what? Let's be ahead of the curve. Let's talk about this today because if we're counting on assessments on the income approach to be better next time, to help us, not sure it's gonna be there.
I'll tell you one more story, Vicky. So I built a shop on my old land and the RM is smiling, my old land, but they didn't assess it A. On that shop, I paid twenty-five thousand a year tax because it's assessed commercial. And if I, if I would have been assessed farmer, it would have been, they don't assess property on A. So you could build a ten million dollar shop and they only have So you could build a $10 million shop and they only assess on the land. And, uh, yeah, I know where you're coming from, I, I don't know how it happened. It's gotta come from higher up on the bigger, how the government at Saskatchewan looks, how we look at our taxes where you need so much money to make it work. They gotta, they gotta go to the other groups and get some more from them. Is basically the only way commercial taxes are going down and.
But, but you do influence taxation.
We move, we move, we move it from one to the next, right?
The budget, that it's about the spending expenditures, so you do impact, impact.
But we have camera, I don't know where we.
No, no, I'm not saying, I, I don't wanna get into that issue. But I'm just saying that there is impact that all of us can have proactively. So I don't wanna keep you any longer, I, I, I don't, it isn't a debate. It's really just about how do we help innovate and get creative? Because I think the future is not as bright with the income-based approach to some of the properties, which is unreasonable and unfair to me, I, that's how I see it. But it's our reality, so how do you change that? Cause it may be happening at some.
I, we appreciate your company, Vicki, you've obviously shared some of this with myself and with Audrey before and Jenna. I think I can speak for this council, that we would probably be very interested in working with something. Our whole goal is to grow this community, and business is the way you grow. So therefore, if you can set up somebody, we will ensure that we have representation, myself, likely a counselor that will join us and will facilitate meetings here at any point in the game.
Okay.
And we'll work together on this, because I, I totally agree with your philosophy that we gotta work together to grow it not. Apart, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, for sure.
Everyone was Vicki, are in business one way or another, so I don't think, play, draw and set there'd be any problem. If you want two or three, whatever, that I'm sure.
And I don't necessarily need to lead the ship, I don't, that's not what my goal was today. I just wanna tell you, we need to get the volume, because it's, it's too critical to, we want help. We want the help of our business community to be strong, because they drive the ship. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, make care.
Agenda item 8.1, that the council of town of Kindersley resolves to receive and has presented the audit of other financial statements and supporting schedules of the town of Kindersley for the year end December 31st, 2020, as prepared by NMPLOP, and these documents are received as information and filed. CAO, Audrey, would you care to speak on that at all?
Sure, so we had, over the last, it's been a long time, um, month or so we've been doing the audit. Um, they've now finished and concluded, um, the review of financial statements that were presented to, or submitted to them. And she did present to council, um, just their bindings and some, so yeah, we had a bit of a deficit this year, but, um, that's not, not huge and, um, we did a lot, uh, a couple more projects came in a little over budgeted and, um, we wouldn't count for that, but I remember that, it was, um, they found no huge item in there.
Uh, any other questions, council? I think after the smoke all cleared, it was what, uh?
Probably about, I think, about 54, yeah, about 50, not even quite. I think it probably around 30,000, I guess.
Yeah, we had a small deficit, but I mean, that's explained by the fact that we did a fair bit more work in the industrial area than we had budgeted for, but it made sense to do it, uh, carry on.
Yeah, we didn't split it 50, 50 like we ever.
Yeah, we ended up from 170, 30, I think, percentage wise, so. That work will be completed given the.
Yeah, within a month or so, it should be complete. So originally, it was a two-year plan, so we had budgeted 50% last year, 50% this year, so.
Yeah, so we, that is the reason for the. Uh, I need, any other questions, council? Seeing none, I need to move around the second or, Andy, all in favor? Okay, agenda item 8.2, that the council of town of Kindersley hereby authorizes the abatement of the question of the 2021 municipal taxes for assessment number 002028030, and 318 railway, and the amount of 23817. Audrey, you wanna just comment?
Yeah, so this is, um.
Implication or something?
Yeah, this property, so we have a minimum tax, um, it was the direction that they either, this is a, uh, multi-class property where it's got residential and commercial, and, um, we only charge minimum tax on one of the credentials classes, which is usually commercial. So on this property, um, we need to, uh, the, the, um, difference between letting the residential and applying the minimum tax.
Any questions on that, council? Dr. Ed, move her to the second, please, one, second here, all in favor? Okay, agenda item 8.3, that the council of town of Kindersley hereby authorizes the abatement of the 2021 municipal taxes in the amount of $14,268.28 for assessment number 0080050105, Cote d'Arc, as per the charitable nonprofit organization property tax abatement policy. Audrey?
Yeah, so the, we have a, a nonprofit abatement policy. This organization did, um, apply for their other properties, this one just got placed into their name. And so we're just, you know, we have, um, because they already applied for their other properties that we also, um, would have applied for this one. The council would choose it.
Any questions, council? Move her in second, please. First, second here, all in favor? 8.4, that the couns, the council of town of Kindersley resolves to direct the mayor and CAO to enter into a tax abatement. Yeah, that's right. Tax abatement agreement for the three years beginning in January of 2022 until December 31st, 2025 with the following order, entity-style contracting, Randy and Lois Bacon, Derry, Don Fawn, Mary Watson, Yee Hang Hen, Brad Koontz, and Lana Virginia, and Jamie Holland. CAO?
This was, um, um, with regards to the annexation of, or boundary alterations for including, um, the, I don't know what that is. Anyway, that annexation, the annexation of that property. Um, and they had, um, asked for a tax abatement to help ease them into the, into the difference in the taxes for being in there and now being in the town limits. And, um, this is what, uh, council had proposed, so this is just the agreement that we will enter to for those properties.
Any comments, council? Seeing none, I'll need to move her in the second here for that motion, and being already the second, uh, on paper. And 8.5, that the council of town of Kindersley resolves to direct the mayor and CAO to enter into a land transfer agreement with Motherwell Estates Condominium Corporation. Audrey, you mean?
Oh, I forgot, I forgot. So, um, this is, sorry. So this is a land transfer agreement, um, with Motherwell Estates Condominium Corp. Uh, so it's the land transfer of their road network system, so Orchard Road and Duckvine Lane, um, would then come into the town of Kindersley's public roadway inventory. Um, and this agreement, um, basically just sets that out and, um, yeah.
Comments, council? Seeing none, I need to move around the second for that, please, one, second ready, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, and let me have a few seconds here. I have one more item, 8.6. That the council of town of Kindersley resolves to direct the mayor and CAO to enter into a property tax abatement agreement with Maricopa Equities Corporation. Audrey?
Hi, so this is, um, the Maricopa, this is that area in Barbara Falls, um, and, uh, Winston had come in, um, spoken with that so a whole minutes ago, and, um, this is just a decision that council wanted, just to help him out longer here, to try and get that property, um, uh, moving and, and helping out with that.
Any queries, council, or not? Yeah, this is a, a year-to-year abatement we have been doing. There's been a lot of lots sitting out there, and, uh, Mr. Stern is in the process of working with us on a development. He's gonna start getting some building going on there, hopefully in the next month, I would think. So, uh, we resolved to keep his taxes at the same as they have been for probably the last four or five years, I would say. I need a mover and a second for that, to the, paper and second, all in favor? Moving on to agenda item 9.1, that the council of town of Kindersley resolves to accept as submitted the list of accounts obtained by the town of Kindersley in the amount of $243,068.19. I'm gonna copy of said accounts be attached to form part of the minutes of this meeting. Did you get any queries on, no queries, any queries now, council?
I just had one question, um, sorry, I didn't report this to you, Audrey. I noticed we'd spent close to $9,000 in flowers. Was that, was that a number of items, like planters and flowers or?
That's all the, that's the, all the planters and.
All the new, uh, self-watering and all that?
Well, not the planters, I, he might have bought a couple, it's mostly the flowers I went into.
Yeah, they went, I went to Fuddles and they did all the Main Street flowers at the planters. The flowers plus the planters.
And the labor.
Yes, yeah, they did go.
So that's, is that number 10 or 11, or is that just awarded to some?
While I call, if I try to.
It's under 10.
It's under 10, so we, um, could get, we can get a hold for sure.
Oh, no, I just wondered if, uh, if it was something we alternated or whether it was, uh, how that was handled. I didn't realize flowers were, I'm not a gardener, I didn't realize flowers were, it seems like a lot of flowers, but I don't know where they went, so.
There are a lot.
There are a lot.
There's a lot of flowers.
I know what she was going to tell us.
Somebody got a deal of 20%.
Well, that's how you what she was saying.
Yeah.
I need to move her to the second for the payments. Gary, second, please, all in favor? Okay, this one's jealous, well, I can't put that in here. Agenda item 10.1, whereas in Saskatchewan, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems, providing countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors around the world. And whereas recreation enhances quality of life, active living and lifelong learning, helps people live happier and longer, develop skills and positive self-image in children's hands, develops creativity and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyles. And whereas recreation participation builds family unity and social capital, strengthens volunteer and community development, enhances social interaction, creates pride, community, uh, the, so creates community pride and vitality and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity. And whereas recreation, therapeutic recreation and leisure recreation are essential to enhancing the quality of life of individuals who experience living with an disability or have become ill or are disadvantaged. And whereas the benefits provided by recreation and parks programs and service, services reduce healthcare and social service costs, serve to boost the economy, economic renewal and sustainability, enhance property values, attract new business and increase tourism. And whereas our parks, open spaces and trails ensure ecological sustainability, provide space to enjoy nature, help maintain clean air and water and preserve plant and animal wildlife. And whereas all levels of government, the nonprofit and voluntary sectors and private enterprise throughout the province participate in the planning, development and operation of recreation, parks, programs, services and facilities. Now, therefore being resolved that Saskatchewan Parks and Recreation Association, SPRA does hereby proclaim that June, which witnesses the grinning of Saskatchewan and serves as a significant gateway to family activities, has been designated in, as June is Recreation and Parks Month, which will annually, annually recognize and celebrate the benefits derived year-round from quality of public and private recreation and parks resources at the local, regional and provincial levels. Therefore, the town of Kindersley, the recognition of the benefits and values that parks and recreation, parks and leisure services provide, does hereby designate the month of June as Parks, as June is Parks and Recreation Month.
She was not sure if I said now.
She told me, you said, you said but to sure. It didn't even, any of them, I need to move her in the second for that, now I'll reclaim the dissertation for Andy and your, all in favor? Thank you. Agenda item 11.1, that the council of town of Kindersley resolves to approve the consent agenda. She included the following items for acceptance and filing. Please report to June 2021 EK meeting minutes, S.A.S. Water, May 2021, monthly report, Water Security Agency permit to operate, and the Kindersley Chamber of Commerce financial statements. They're all attached there, if you wanna go through them. Wait, they are. Agenda, they're all attached. I would need to move her in the second here for the motion, please, one, second here, all in favor? Agenda item 15.1, that the council of town of Kindersley resolves, no business having been concluded to the 214, 2020 on revenue, council will be adjourned at 8:10 PM. Over and so, eight, seven, four, all in favor?